Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Londonderry Town Council meeting for September 13th, 2021. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing for a moment of silence for the 297, 2,997 people who gave their life on the attacks of September 11. Thank you. Okay. So tonight we have public comment. I see we have Director Kitchens here this evening. Did you want him to go first?
Up to you.
It's okay with me. Ted, floor is yours.
And thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. Thoroughly enjoy our relationship with the town of Londonderry and all the support that you have provided us over the course of my tenure and obviously long before I started. It's been a long and proud history and relationship and cooperation. We certainly want to see that continue. You know, Google can do funny things, but sometimes it can provide some insight. Last time I was here, according to Google, was September 9th, 2019. So what have you guys been up to since then? Got a little bit of history here to cover.
Hanging out at home.
Yeah. So the next slide. I want to give an update real quick on some of the activity that's occurred at the airport and really focus on air service first. The impact of the pandemic and our recovery and current near-term airport capital improvement projects that I think may be of interest to your constituents. Of course, the big news is the big yellow airplane that you see on the top. The first new airline to join the Manchester family in 17 years. We announced back in June, the initiation of service by Spirit Airlines starting on October 7th. So we're on the final stretch, about three weeks out from the first flight. In fact, on my way here, I was touring some of their operation spaces at the airport and things are getting ready. It's a lot of stuff to put up the back wall, the kiosks, all their gate area, the ramp markings. There's a lot of stuff that goes on to get this airline up off the ground here at the airport. And so certainly looking forward to that. But we've also recently announced last week, the formation of the asset group, which is the Air Service Support and Enhancement Team, which is a coalition of the six, actually seven chambers of commerce here in the southern tier of the state, the tri-cities, plus Salem, South Heagan, Hudson, and Derry-Londonderry chambers. So appreciate the support of Town Manager Smith, but also Ashley Hazetine over at the Derry-Londonderry Chamber of Commerce. And then other update we have is the SCASI grant, Small Community Air Service Development Grant. That's a grant program that we can go after as an airport. We've been eligible to go after those grants for probably about 10 years, but this is the first time we ever chased one of those grants. And we were successful in receiving that, which is $425,000 to help market Spirit Airlines. So next slide. So just continuing on Spirit, four non-stop daily flights heading out of Manchester to Orlando, Fort Lauderdale, Fort Myers, and Tampa. Orlando and Fort Lauderdale daily non-stops starts October 7th. Fort Myers is going to be four times weekly. It'd be a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Saturday service profile starts November 17th. And then Tampa will be Tuesday, Thursday, Sundays, and that starts November 18th. So book now at spirit.com. Some crazy low fares. I just looked them up before this meeting. A round trip from Manchester to Orlando is right around $131. The comparable flight on Southwest right now is 800. So certainly Spirit does require you to pay an extra for the seat or for the bag or anything of that nature. But you're not going to spend 700 extra dollars per person doing that. So some really good fares out there. These are their normal fares. So I suggest everybody take a look at that airline. It's got the youngest fleet in the sky. They keep on bringing new airplanes online. They're buying about 25 new airplanes a year. So it's a new metal out there and new service to some popular destinations. Next slide. So Spirit's going to provide exactly what this market has needed for the past decade, which is lower fares, more destinations, direct flights. Those are not my words. Those are the words that we hear from the community whenever we survey through the University of New Hampshire Survey Center. Those are the top three ways that we can get people who are not flying Manchester, Boston Regional Airport, but rather Boston Logan, to start using Manchester, Boston Regional Airport are those three methods. And as I just mentioned, they're a lot lower fares, four more destinations, and all of them being non-stop. And so if the community buys enough tickets, then I'm confident that they will expand their offerings out of Manchester. That's been their modus operandi for the past few cities that they've opened. They make an announcement, but then when they get to the inaugural flight, they actually make additional announcements. I don't know if that's going to necessarily happen for us this time because of some of their operational challenges that they had as an airline about a month ago. They learned some lessons. All airlines go through this. JetBlue went through this back in 2007 with the Valentine's Day massacre, as they call it. But they've learned some lessons. I think they're going to kind of back off the throttles, to borrow an aviation analogy, a little bit on how hard they're running the airline right now. But if the community does not buy enough tickets, and I think it's going to be a long time, perhaps decades. It's been 17 years for this one. It may be twice as long if we do not support this airline and this were to fail. So this is our chance as a community to support the airport and draw additional air service into the airport. Spirit wants to grow. They said that at their launch event. And I'm confident that they will grow beyond those four Florida cities and three daily flights if we buy enough tickets. So it's really up to the community at this point. Next slide. So switching to the impact of COVID-19, next. This was a graph that our senior staff, or my senior staff, pulled together back in April last year. That shows our trend line in the blue of monthly passengers getting on an airplane. Everybody can spot the pandemic, I hope, there when we all dropped down to negative 95%. And then we had four recovery scenarios that we generated again back in April last year that we hoped would time-box the actual recovery. No one knew how this thing was going to play out, but we wanted to draw the four corners of a box in terms of pace of recovery and the time of recovery and the amount of recovery. And that's how we generate those four recovery scenarios. And the red line is our actual recovery to date by month. Now, that third line down, the one with the gray line with the squares, that is what we have used as our operational baseline for all of our fiscal year budgeting. So I wish I had gone out and bought a lottery ticket because I've never seen a line follow that closely, a actual forecast in my professional career. So that is an amazing amount of accuracy there. It's not where we want to be, but it is exactly where we thought we would be at this point in the recovery. You can see between October and September, we have a little bit of a V there. That's just our normal cycle that we go through. All airports go through this cycle this time of the year. School vacations or summer vacations are over. Kids are back in school. And that business traveler is not there that would normally be there to help fill the aircraft. So we think we'll have a little bit of a drop-off here for the month of September. But then with Spirit Airlines bringing in 600 new seats a day, we think October onward, we should be a little bit above that gray line with the squares. And our goal is to get to that purple line, which is about our 12-month or 24-month average heading into the pandemic of monthly passengers getting on an airplane. So you can see in all of our financial models, we have this full recovery ending at the end of fiscal year '23, which is that last square on the gray line. And we have enough funding from the federal government through the three tranches of money that I'll mention in a second to get us through the end of fiscal year '24. So we have a full year's worth of buffer to get back to that gray line or the purple line. Next. So bottom line, our recovery has improved substantially since February of this year. We have, underpinning that growth scenario, the recovery scenarios, was an expectation that the pace of vaccinations will dictate the consumer confidence and that as vaccinations got more widely spread, that the consumer confidence and the safety of travel will increase. And that will lead to people getting back on an airplane. So right now, we believe we have interfaced for the recovery. And we think this will continue until we reach 100% of the pre-pandemic passenger activity levels. Next slide. And this shows you, the graph on the right shows, you know, 2019, 2020, and 2021, seven-day rolling throughput through the checkpoint. So you can see in 2020 in the gray line, that's kind of our baseline. You can see in the blue line, excuse me, in 2019 is the gray line. The blue line is 2020. We're actually starting 2020 off in a very, very strong sense. We were up about 5% over the same period in 2019, and then the world changed on us pretty quickly. Again, you can easily spot where the pandemic is. We had that fast growth there in the early part of summertime. And then we plateaued as a second wave, trains spread throughout the southern tier. And then we actually started regressing near the end of that blue line when the CDC came out and said, "Nobody should travel for the holidays or for Thanksgiving." And then you can see we picked up. There's a little bit of an uptick in that blue line at the end of the year. That carried over into the orange line. And then you can see in February how that orange line really starts growing at about a 45-degree angle. You have your normal holidays sprinkling in there that show the little dips in that orange line. And right now, you can see the very end of that orange line in 2021 is indicative of that softening of demand as the summer travel season comes to an end. So that is as of yesterday, that orange line. So we're still seeing overall about 70% of a return to our pre-pandemic activity level. But again, it would be very interesting to watch this line after October 7th, then again after November 17th and 18th, when Spirit gets up in the sky. And the aircraft on the left was a special livery that Southwest did called Freedom One that came and visited the airport. I believe it was about two weeks ago. So I thought that was a very timely visit for that aircraft to the live free or die estate. Told Southwest Network Planning that maybe a flight to Manchester should have been flight number one for that airplane. Next. So as I mentioned earlier, we received three tranches of federal financial support. The first one is through the CARES Act. We received about $12.1 million in federal financial support. We've nearly used 100% of those funds to date. So that is completely drawn down upon, but we have spent 100% of the funds we have received or drawn down on so far to reimburse ourselves for the debt financing and also for cash that we use to do some advanced refunding on some debt that we closed on at the end of March that reduced our debt load from $17 million a year to $8 million a year. Thank goodness we did that and we closed in March because it reduced our total exposure quite a bit and also reduced the airline operating costs by about $3 a person. The second tranche was through CRISA, the Coronavirus Relief and Recovery Supplemental Appropriations Act. We received about $4.3 million on that. We're just now starting to draw down on those funds. About 182,000 of that is reserved for concessionaire relief, but we will continue to use our portion of that grant for debt service purposes. And then after we draw down on those, we'll go into the America Rescue Plan Act grant, which we received $8.7 million. Again, 730,000 is reserved for concessionaire relief. The concessionaires, which include not just the food and beverage, but our rental cars, they were not included in the CARES Act grant. That's why they were included in the second tranches of federal support. But we have 730,000 in that, and we'll continue to use that again for debt service purposes. All told, we received right around $23 million, $24 million. I have about $100 million in outstanding debt, so I'm going to chuck all that towards debt service. All right. So any questions on that? If not, I'll go real quick through the future plans at the airport.
Any questions? Public comment. Any questions from the audience? Please proceed.
All right. Thank you. So future plans, the biggest one that's out there right now is we entered into an agreement with Air Term to market and develop a new cargo hangar at the airport, which is, this is an artist's rendition of what this cargo facility would look like. It's located just to the north of the terminal. It's 100% in the town of Londonderry. And so we're working on some of the demolition of some hangars that are there, old hangars that are there now, as well as the design of the apron. That is our responsibility as an airport. We recently received governor and council approval to enter into a loan with the Business and Findings Authority that will be pledged, or pledges future FAA entitlement development grants as repayment of the principal. And so we're going forward with the development of that apron here and the design, the development of that apron shortly. And then the developer is required to build the building whenever they've identified a tenant. Next. Another thing we're working on is because we're starting to run out of room for cargo and cargo and e-commerce are certainly here to stay. We are coming off of our second record year as an airport, moving over 210 million pounds of cargo through the airport last year. We're a top 50 cargo airport in the United States. As we're looking over the horizon and say, "Okay, where do we continue to build these cargo facilities?" And honestly, we're land poor as an airport. We don't really have much green space left to develop. So we're forced to start looking at areas that are already currently developed and ask if we're getting the highest and best use of that land and getting the most return or the highest level of return off of the land that we do have. So we're working with our on-call planning consultant, AECOM, some conceptual layouts focusing on that area that is currently, you know, the hex hangars over to, which is right behind the FedEx Ground facility, through the existing FedEx facilities, and then the UPS facility. And the reason for this is not only is cargo growing leaps and bounds, but our landing fee is going to be substantially lower than it's going to be out at Logan Airport. And these carriers really help subsidize the operating costs for commercial airlines because they fly bigger aircraft in. So therefore, they're paying more in the landing fee to help for the maintenance and upkeep of the airfield. And that helps our commercial airlines. But also because the UPS facility reverts back to the airport in 2024 and UPS is looking potentially to expand that facility because again, they are running out of room at Logan and they don't want to pay the higher fees down in Boston. Current Air Term facility, which is the existing FedEx facilities, are also not optimized. The buildings are not aligned. They're stair-stepped to each other. So we want to try to recreate that space in the way that it needs to create so we can optimally take care or take advantage of the acreage that we do have. Next. So one of the goals that we want to do is transform the airport into a multimodal hub, improving regional bus connectivity to the airport. We all know about the state subsidized busing. How do we get that to come to the airport before it heads down the road? Include the airport stop, a true airport stop on any rail connectivity or rail studies that are going on with the Capitol Corridor. There is an airport stop. It's over the hills and through the woods over in Bedford. It's not at the terminal. So how do we get a stop at the airport so that you don't enter ject of middle change for users of the rail? And then embracing advanced air mobility, regional air mobility. These are the VTOLs, the vertical takeoff aircraft that you're seeing out there, which are essentially large drones that can carry four to six people. So how can we take advantage of advanced air mobility and regional air mobility to increase our service area, which we call the catchment area in aviation lingo, by bringing people or making it easier for people in the North Country or over from Keene to get to the airport? Next slide. So just some upcoming construction projects. Taxway Hotel, which is the piece of taxiway to the north and east of the runway intersection on the aerial, on the right side. That piece of taxiway will undergo a significant reconstruction beginning in spring. This is 100% FAA federal match on a 2020 FAA grant. It's part of the CARES, the CRISA, and the ARPA grants. There was a bunch of plus-ups, as we call it, typically FAA funds at 90%, but the federal government through those relief bills increased the federal match to 100%. So there's no state money in this. There's no local match required in this. So it's a $6.2 million project. So if your constituents are flying out of the airport and we're in a wind environment that supports taking off from runway 17, there may be a little bit of a taxi delay associated with that because of the construction. Next slide. Fire alarm replacement. This is inside the terminal building, again, a 100% federal project that was awarded to Paquette and Howard. The project is underway right now. Your constituents may hear some fire alarms going off because they're testing the strobes. They're testing all the peripherals. The entire fire alarm system is original to the building, so it's well over 20 years old. Parts are hard to come by, so we're replacing all the peripherals and the head end, as well as the fire panels. So that's underway right now, about halfway through that. The one that's probably, the next slide that's the most impactful is our escalator replacement project. The down escalator is currently out of service and the up escalator is in service, but ConA was awarded the project, another 100% federal grant. The down escalator will be turned over to us here in a matter of a few weeks, which is about two weeks ahead of schedule. And then they'll switch over to the up escalator. We will then reverse the down escalator into the up position. And we'll always have an upward mobility up the steps. We find that most people don't, although they don't like carrying their bags up or down the steps, they really prefer carrying them down the steps versus carrying them up the steps, at least I do. So we're going to try to provide that high level of customer service and minimize that disruption. But we will also reverse this escalator throughout the day depending on the primary flow in the building. So late at night, when it's primarily arrivals, we'll have it in the down position. Early in the morning, when it's primarily departures, we'll have it in the up position. And then throughout the day, we'll monitor, you know, the flight activity and adjust accordingly. All right. So looking over the horizon to next year, next slide. We have three major projects that are in our capital improvement program. One is the reconstruction of runway 1735, which is our main north-south runway. So that will alter flight patterns to the benefit of Londonderry, but to the detriment of Manchester because everybody will be off of 624, which is the crosswind. But 1735 will be down. That project is being designed right now, so we don't know the exact duration or the scope of the reconstruction, but it is time for that runway to be repaired. Project cost is estimated at 15 million. It's concurrent to that, we're going to fix a piece of our perimeter road, which is right against the fence line at Harvey and Pettingill. And that area needs to be regraded and fixed, have some drainage issues fixed. So that'll be work that's going right against the fence line, so that may impact your constituents. It's going to be a high-visibility project. That is going to happen at the same time that we reconstruct the runway so that we just close the runway once instead of multiple times. And then Project C on the map is our retaining wall to Taxway Alpha. You probably don't see it when you're taxiing out, but there will be some work done right at the top of that wall to address some drainage issues. We had a little bit of a pop-out in that wall, and that is mechanically stabilized earth wall. So some water was getting down behind the panels and hydrostatic pressure was pushing out on the MSE wall. So we fixed that, but the permanent fix is to cap that area with some concrete and drainage swales so they drain away from the wall permanently instead of seeping in behind the panels as it is now. And that's the way it's been since that wall was reconstructed or originally constructed. I don't even know when that wall was constructed, as well before my time. And that's going to be estimated about 1.5 million. So that is my presentation tonight, so open up to any questions that you may have.
Turn the lights on, please.
And I do have hard copies of the presentation that I could leave behind with Kirby.
Tom?
Thank you for coming tonight. I really appreciate it. Can you tell us, as Spirit adds aircraft, what typically are the kinds of aircraft that they're adding?
Sure. So these are going to be Airbus A321 aircraft. So we see some of those in our fleet every now and then with American Airlines when they upgauged a mainline aircraft with similar size to the 737s that Southwest flies. It's about 182 seats.
Thank you.
So Ted, are you seeing an increase in private aircraft looking to use the airport?
Yes and no. We are full. All of our hangars are full. I mean, we have a waiting list for some of the larger hangars. So we're working with Signature to see if there's a way that we can add some additional hangar space at the airport. But we have noticed that since the way that New Hampshire charges and taxes and values the aircraft is now similar to Massachusetts, before, New Hampshire was a much higher tax rate than Massachusetts, we've seen some increase in interest in having those aircraft here at the airport. We are seeing more flight, school activity. So you're seeing a little bit more of the smaller aircraft and what we call the local traffic pattern, which are just doing touch and goes at the airport as they're training pilots. There's been a substantial pilot shortage for a long time in the aviation industry. And I think the pandemic exacerbated that and accelerated the pilot shortage that we have. So there's going to be a need to train more and more pilots here, probably for the next 10 to 20 years.
So I think a number of people in the community saw the military aircrafts that are doing the, they come in, they touch, they go.
Yep.
Maybe you could tell us a little bit about that, just so, you know, if people have questions.
Sure. So part of that, I mean, that really started when P's had their runway down for their reconstruction and the New Hampshire Air National Guard asked if they could base a few of the aircraft at our airport temporarily or they want to have to move all their aircraft out of New Hampshire. And so we said, "Yeah, we'd love to have that activity. It helps our tower. It helps keep our tower open 24 hours." We're one of the few airports in New England outside of Boston that has a 24-hour air traffic control tower. We think with the movement of aircraft at night, particularly with the cargo aircraft, that that's a very important enhancement to the safety margin at the airport. And FAA was, quite honestly, trying to take the tower away from us during the pandemic. They made a run at reducing the air traffic control tower hours from 24 hours a day to 10. So we were like, "No, we're not going to do that." They make a run at this every four, maybe 10 years. The last time they did that was about 10 years ago. And we successfully got off the hook on that one and we got off the hook on this one. So I think the Air National Guard understands that. They appreciate that. And they need another airfield to kind of help do some of these touch and goes just to get their pilot hours up and keep them current and fresh. So, and we technically, legally, are bound to allow government aircraft to use our airfield at any time they want to because in exchange for the 90% federal grant, or now in this case, the 100% federal grant for the taxiways and the runways, I have to sign on the dotted line. And one of the strings that comes with those federal funds is that government aircraft can use the airport as long as it's not providing an operational challenge to the airport. So unless we want to pick up that tax, that construction fee, I think we continue to allow them to use the airfield.
No, no. Great. Are there any other questions?
Ted, in terms of cargo movement, right, where do we rank as an airport?
Last time I checked the numbers, and this was before, our last, last year, we're number 48 in the nation. And we saw a pretty significant bump last year, probably about an 8% year-over-year growth. So I have not seen the newest rankings yet, but I'm sure if everybody else saw that same bump, then we're probably in that same range, but we may have jumped a few points.
Folks, this is public comment. Is there anyone who has any questions about the airport?
Marge Bedoy, 189 Littre Road. Have we lost any carriers?
We we have, temporarily, we we lost United, but United came back, and then Delta has insisted that their exit from the market is temporary. But I've not seen a movement towards Delta coming back into the market quite yet. So we had four carriers going into the pandemic, we have four carriers coming out, but they're not the same four carriers as we had pre-pandemic. We lost Delta, but gained Spirit.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Director Kitchens.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in.
My pleasure. Anytime. Good seeing you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is public comment. If there's anyone who would like to address the council, now would be the time. Go ahead, take the call. I'll hold off on the police. Anyone else from public comment? Well, then I'm going to go back, oh, I was going to go back to the police.
Here, here, doesn't matter.
Hi.
Chris Oliverio, 1 Trolley Car Lane.
Hi, Chris.
Hi, John. I know I got my email I sent on the 26th of July and August 10th about the road race that was down 1 Trolley Car, down Trolley Car Lane itself. Is there, do I have to set up a time to discuss that, or?
No. What would you like to discuss? I I saw the responses that went back, I mean, so help me, help me help you.
I saw your response. That's the only one I saw, unless it went into my other, another folder, but I only saw yours, and I apologize.
Kevin, didn't, didn't we, didn't, John Mortimer responded to that, right? I thought I was, I was copied on it.
All right, I didn't see it.
Did you not see his response?
No, I only saw yours. I, when I pulled it up, I only saw.
So, so I apologize, I didn't, I didn't know you didn't get it. John Mortimer sent back a long response. I was cop, I think I was copied on, and I think the council was copied on it. I apologize that you didn't see it.
No, it's not your fault if I didn't see it. I just saw your response saying, you know, you talked to the police chief and to come to a town council meeting to to discuss that anytime. You responded on the 11th of August.
And then we, then we responded after that, right?
We did, yeah, and John did respond.
I'll have to look at my other.
But you know what? Chris, just for your benefit, we have Captain Bernard here, who was prepared to speak on it after he had sent the email, because we weren't sure if you were going to be in or not. Kim, do you want to just comment at all as far as what, I know you don't even know the topic right now. We're talking about the road race preparation, and in particular, the the Brew Chase one and what happened on Trolley Car. But do you want to just give a very brief synopsis of what goes into the planning prior to any of the road races?
Chris, sorry about that. I'll see to it that you get a, get an email, if we can dig that out and get that to you.
So anytime we get a road race or any major town event, Lieutenant Jason Breen, who's our town coordinator for any large-scale events such as the road races. Lieutenant Breen had attended a class several years ago on preparation into large-scale events. When they come to town to get approved by your office, I believe, first, they come to us for our logistic planning and approval. Jason Breen oversees these, and what he'll do is work with the the company, in this case here, Millennium Running. He will work with them closely. Millennium Running has been doing these events for, I think, close to 20 years now, working with agencies throughout the state every time they host or they perform a road race. This one in particular here, that you're talking about, sir, I believe, Trolley Car Lane or Hovey Road?
Yep.
Right. On that matter there, there was some miscues as far as signage. Mr. Mortimer was advised, in the last several years, we've dealt with him for these large-scale races. Anytime there's been a concern or a complaint, we've addressed it with him directly, and he's gone above and beyond and and fixed any concern we've ever had. I think this one here particularly might have been just an oversight on the signage.
That's what it was, was I left in the morning, I saw cones going up Hovey. I came back and I was told at Mickel's Way, I was approaching that on Pillsbury, that I couldn't go past that point, and I would have to go around. I went around and it was blocked off. I came back and said, I live on Trolley Car. And he said, go ahead. And I get to Trolley Car and this cone's going down our road, and runners going up and down, I stole the weight, which is not a big issue, it's just a matter of dodging runners, it's a dead-end road, there's no other outlet except for a Classics Road. And the concern was that there was no, like, pre-advanced, like, heads-up signage or notice or anything that I was aware of, you know, living on a dead-end road with only one entrance.
Okay, I believe Mr. Mortimer's team, I don't know the timeframe, but I know it's prior to the race, they do what they call door hangars. They put out hangars, they'll send a flyer.
I got several neighbors who live on our road here.
So that's what I know as far as what they generally do for notification.
Yeah, in in his email, and we'll make sure you get his email, he admitted to there wasn't adequate communication to the folks at Trolley Car in terms of access to the road. It was fully accessible on race day, but that information obviously could have been communicated a lot better to you folks, admittedly by the the race event officials. And certainly, if there was ever a need to get emergency vehicles down that road, I think Kim would tell you that that takes precedent over anything.
It does, with 100 racers on the road at any given time, because they had to go down, turn around, and come back, you have racers going down and up the road.
Sure.
It was pretty busy for a dead-end road.
Yeah.
You know, on that day, and without notification, we could have had, you know, trying to have people over, how did they get to our house?
Right.
You know, guests, and the day before, I had 15 people over for our get-together. If it was that day, I don't know how they would get there, because they don't say they live in the road, they're just going somewhere. So it was just limited access to even the residents, the people that were directing traffic didn't have a clue what to tell us, except for just wait here, and, you know, about 15 minutes went by before I could go down the road.
It's Chris, right?
Yep.
So any anytime going, if this happens again, or any road of a race comes up again, just reach out to us, too, if you need some clarification, and we could work directly to get you and the residents on Trolley Car some more info on that, and I didn't hear about that.
Perhaps, perhaps if another road race comes up that involves Trolley Car, let's not wait, and let's go to the neighborhood and let them know what's going on.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you know, I, just based on what I'm listening to, let's be proactive.
Got it.
If you see the sign on the road, heads-up, you know, it might be inconvenienced or something like that, or, you know, but I know it's not you, it's really on the race.
That's okay, glad to help anyway.
Trying to see if I can find this email from Mortimer. So he sent an email, let me see, is this the one that he sent on the 13th of August? It's addressed to you and me, and.
I might just have to filter my email differently. There's a focus, and then there's a junk and all that.
Yeah, it's called Brewery Chase Relay. It's to you and me and to the town council, and it has his email on it. And he goes into some detail about it. So it came out on the 13th at 1:03 PM.
Okay, I'll look for it.
Sorry about that, I I thought you had it, that's why I thought I didn't hear from you.
No, I only saw yours, and I figured, I should have probably let you know I was coming and.
I apologize.
All right, no problem. Thank you for your attention.
All right, so folks, it's public comment. Kim, why don't you stay there? Is there anyone else for public comment before I have the police go? Yes, sir. Yes, run up. So the the police are here to tell us about another incident in town, so please feel free. May I have your name and address for our?
Dan Bragg, 5 Trolley Car Lane.
Yes, sir. You can have a seat if you like.
Thank you. I've been communicating with Kevin about a recent thing with the, the race thing was kind of interesting, because we saw the cones on Trolley Car Lane up and down the street, and everybody got excited because they thought we were going to be repaved. So I said, oh, well, we got moved up on the list, and they're going to pave, and it coincided with a new driveway being installed at my house, so, so we were, we were really overjoyed, and then, then the cones went away, so now we know the mystery of that.
Sorry about that.
The the other most recent thing that's come up, and I think is probably just a communication problem with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. There has been some letters sent to to residents on Trolley Car Lane advising them that their property would be appraised, and some of the people are here today. And there's been some confusion as to what's going on. We're getting a little bit of story, but again, we just don't get the facts, we just get the the letters. People, you know, people don't know whether their houses are being appraised, because they're going into some people's houses, and some people, they're saying they only need to look at the land. Now, this is a concern. The other concern is what are they doing? Is this an oversight on something that happened when they did 9993 and they didn't get enough right-of-way? Or are they increased the right-of-way because they added a lane to 93 but didn't realign the road, so now they have to to make up for it? If you're going to do 4A, you have to have more land. And so I think what would really be helpful is if we have some clarification. I don't want to get into the weeds, I don't want to get into the contract discussion with with people, and we know what's going on, we're not going to try to block it, but what we want to know is what's going on. Are they going to, you know, take out some trees or realign a stream? Are they going to build an access road? You know, yeah, to build the the berm for the noise barrier and and do a lot of things? We don't know.
So I'll take it in two parts. As far as the letters that went out to the neighbors about which ones they wanted to talk to for further acquisition of land, Wendy Johnson replied last week that they're supposed to be reaching out and making contact with all of those pertinent neighbors this week. If they do not, please let me know by Friday, and I'll just go straight to the commissioner. Because I agree, the communication has been less than great with them. Yeah.
I have an appointment Friday, but no, when I spoke to the man, he said, he, because we were going to try to do it as a group, just because we thought that they were only going to look at the land, and he said, no, 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 I need to come in your house. But if you're taking the back of my property, and you aren't taking it, you're not giving me an option, why do you need to come in my house, too? What's that have to do with it?
Couple mics.
So that's why I'm, I'm a little concerned why they're coming to my house.
Hi.
Hi, I'm sorry.
So if if you could come up to one of the mics, and if I could get your name?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, I've never done this before.
It's quite all right, it's just, it's just this process we have to follow. So your name and your address. We have to keep minutes and records and all that kind of stuff.
Maria Rizelroy, 14 Trolley Car Lane.
Okay, so, so, so Kevin, you heard everything that Marie said.
Yep.
Can we, can we get, get some action here from the state so that we can have a little bit better communication?
Right, yeah, no, that's what I intend to do, because they've been very vague with us as well. You know, as far as why the appraiser needs to go in your house is, you know, because I I don't know what the appraiser's looking at, to be honest, I can't tell you why they're looking to go in the house, too.
Yeah, and that's, that's the thing, they're not telling us anything either.
Right. Well, I'm, so you have an appointment with them on Friday?
Yes.
Okay. I would imagine you're going to find a lot more information on Friday in terms of what they're looking for.
It doesn't seem like it, because when he called me to cancel, he was, they were originally coming on Wednesday, and they needed to reschedule because they're coming with two people.
Is this a state appraiser, or is this a contract appraiser?
Well, I believe it's a contract appraiser for the state.
It says state.
Oh, it says a state appraiser?
Yeah. Bill Belanger.
Yep.
I just had the appraiser come over to my house this morning.
Can you state your name for the?
18 Trolley Car Lane, Bill Belanger. And what they told me was that they were taking pictures of the property, and even asked what I paid for, for the land when I initially built there.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what that had to do with it.
Well, that's all public information.
That's all, that's all available here.
Ask our appraiser, who used to work for the state, to find out who these people are and what they're doing.
Well, I can give you names, I got their cards. I mean, it was Doug Penny out of the, oh, what's the, what's the department? Land acquisitions, or?
Yeah, so our appraiser used to work for the Department of Revenue, so they all have to work with him. So why don't we ask, is it Steve to, why don't we, why don't we get the name, Kirby, if you can get the names of these people from, from this gentleman and from this nice lady, and let's get them over to our guy, and let's find, let's find out who these appraisers are, and find out who they work for and what they're doing. Let's not wait till Friday.
I'll just take a picture of it, yeah.
So, thank you, I appreciate you coming down, because you should be getting better answers than this. And if they're not giving them to you, we're going to go get them.
I had several questions about them, like, if you do acquire the land, what's the process for getting onto the property and going to get the trees cut? And who's going to lumber them out? Is it going to be access from the two pieces of property that were bought on the north side, and they're going to come down along the highway, or are they going to request access to somebody's land, so which means they'd have to cut a trail to get in there? Because you got to get right to 93, and there's a stream back there that they're going to have to divert and move onto my property. So there's a lot of questions.
Let's find out who our person knows.
Okay.
And then, once we find out who these people are, can we get our engineer to get involved and find out what they're doing?
Sure.
You know, because this way, we can, you know, we can find, we know enough about how to, you know, the contours of the land and everything else in town.
Right.
And let's, let's push and get some answers, let's not wait.
Well, and so on the, on the other part of that question, Dan, I'm actually wondering, so John Trotter's here, John's the town's head engineer. John, can you just maybe briefly explain what was done in terms of design before, before VHB started actually doing the actual design now versus what had done, been done preliminarily? Because they have questions about why does it seem like there are some changes occurring right now in terms of land acquisition?
Yeah, so, so originally, when the I-93 widening was, was designed, they had made, had acquired the land all associated with a sound barrier, but now that 4A has come to fruition, that's where, again, so they need to, they will be required to obtain additional right-of-way out there.
That's what they've told me.
Correct.
Those were all defined in their plans, you know, what houses and land and space that they were going to acquire.
I'm sorry, say that again?
When their initial, their original plans, that was all laid out, the houses were in red slashes, the land was marked.
For the 93 widening, absolutely.
This is beyond that.
Absolutely, oh, yeah, because again, 4A requires additional right-of-way.
That was 4A is what I'm talking about. When I went to the 4A planning, they showed what acquisition of land and everything, it wasn't what they're talking about.
But, but it wasn't, it wasn't down to, it wasn't down to the the square foot, though, was it?
No.
Yeah, so now that, now that they've advanced it this far, and VHB, you see surveyors out there all the time.
When they originally started this, it was going to be a three-lane widening. Now it's four lanes, and I got a feeling that they approached on our property even more, because what's happened is the decibel levels have gone up.
Yeah.
It's getting noisier.
Well, again, and and they don't have the wall.
And while they were constructing, they had a barrier going down the middle of the highway, and they pushed the traffic over two lanes, pretty quiet, but they pulled those barriers out.
Yeah, yeah. And again, and DOT decided to to hold off on constructing that sound wall as part of the, the overall widening.
As part of the plan for a.
Correct. Well, again, no, as far as the overall widening, that way they wouldn't have to reconstruct Correct. Well, again, no, as far as the overall widening, that way they wouldn't have to reconstruct it.
I did talk to some of the engineers when they were down there, actually constructing the bridge, reconstructing the bridge.
Yeah, Ash Street, yeah.
Ash Street. And that's what they told me. It says now they're gonna need the additional fifty feet.
Correct. Yep. And as far as Bill, again, and I can't speak for them, but again, more than likely they'll gain access from the interstate to cut the trees and relocate.
There are two buildings that were acquired further north on Trolley Car Lane. Those two buildings are being demolished. So they could actually come down along the highway, all the way down to our properties because they're gonna have to take that land.
Yeah, from the highway though, from the east, from the interstate.
I think they'll be on the land that's acquired from all the property owners on Trolley Car.
Yeah.
Yeah. Going up from where I'm at, every piece of property is affected.
Yeah.
So I'm losing, you know, two-tenths of an acre.
I believe you.
And I know Frank next door to me, he's losing even more.
So let's see if we can get a little bit more engaged here and get a little bit clearer picture of what's going on. These are all very reasonable questions and they shouldn't have to be the ones asking them. So let's go find out. Good? All right, is there anyone else for public comment before I go to the police? Captain Bernard.
Thank you, sir.
So Captain Bernard is at the request of Councilor Dolan, has been asked to come here and talk about the recent car break-ins.
So as we are aware in the community, back in August twenty-fifth, we had thirty vehicles in our community gone through. We had one vehicle stolen. And a lot of the vehicles, most had loose change, iPads, laptops, wallets, bank cards, things of that nature stolen, a couple loose keys. We also had one vehicle stolen from our community. That vehicle was recovered the next day down in Connecticut. Were able to track the car. The case is very similar to the one we had back in January. We didn't have as many vehicles broken into. We were able to solve that one. And that one was solved on good police work by our midnight officers, paying attention to their neighborhoods, trying their best to find anything that looked out of place. And Officer Mottram was able to make a car stop and which led to solving that rash of car break-ins. Right now, the case is still ongoing. We do have some strong leads in it. We were able to recover a lot of property from that. The vehicle has been processed for fingerprints, other DNA, things of that nature. So at this point, it's still ongoing. We do have some suspects that we're trying to ID. They are not local. They are out of Connecticut. So we are working with our Connecticut departments down there to try to work and ID these people. So as far as our community goes, I think it's important to remember, it only takes two seconds to lock our cars, take out your personal belongings. It's more of an inconvenience for them to have to call the police, call your banks. It takes so much more time out of your day and energy to do that. And to be victimized in that way, it's a hard feeling to come over. So we want to express that from the police department standpoint, it's never a dumb question to call and ask us. If it's important to you, the community, it's important to us. You call us, we'll listen to you. We'll give you any guidance we can. And as far as the break-ins go, once we have this thing solved, we'll put something else out on the social media platforms and advising the community where we're at with it. Again, just, you know, lock your doors, make sure your motion lights work. If anybody has any questions or tips or they need some help with their properties or any ideas, they can call us. We'll be more than happy to help them.
Any questions from council?
Captain Bernard, of those thirty-some odd cars that were broken into, how many were unlocked?
All of them. So they're all unlocked and that's, there was more than one person doing this. There was a group of young adults and they were going from neighborhood to neighborhood. They'd get dropped off in one section. They'd take off on feet and then they would rally the next street, get in the car, dump the belongings, go to the next neighborhood. So not one vehicle was damaged that we've been told, all thirty.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Anybody from the public would like to address this situation with the captain? Okay, pass it back over to you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, that ends public comment. Move on to new business order relative to the expenditure of Reclamation Trust Funds Order 2021-14.
Good evening. This evening, I'm here to request that the town council release or approve the release of seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents from the Reclamation Trust Fund. This is for, we had done some improvements down at the drop-off center, regraded the drive, the access drive down there with some recycled asphalt pavement. So that's the purpose of my being here this evening.
Any questions? Accept the motion to approve Order 2021-14.
So, Chairman.
Second.
Well, who's in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair, what's affirmative? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
PFA's Task Force Chair Final Report and Recognition of Members. We're doing recognition of members at the next meeting?
Yes, please.
Fantastic.
As you know, Mr. Chairman, the many members of our community started to see increasing levels of PFAS in their wells and their drinking water over the past few years. And DES has since helped us try to understand and find the source of this contamination. And we have learned that the primary source of contamination, not the only source, but the primary source is from the St. Cobain manufacturing plant in Merrimack. The prevailing wind, as we know, is west to east and those exhaust fumes from that manufacturing facility drifted eastward over Londonderry and those particles fell like rain, if you will, onto our land in Londonderry and then eventually filtered down into the drinking water in the ground. There's been a court order that's been issued between the state DES and St. Cobain that identifies the area that St. Cobain is gonna be held accountable for. And that's referred to as the Consent Decree. And it is basically a high-range road in Londonderry going west. So it's that area, and we have maps if you're curious and haven't seen that area. We have maps to identify it. If you want to come to Town Hall, you can look at them. And by the way, the council, while this report that I'm referring to is in our, is in the backup to our agenda, it's also, a copy is placed in your town inbox as well. So in early February, this town council adopted a resolution to establish a community task force to look into this business of PFAS. And the task force consisted of one town counselor, that being me, one member of the town staff, that being Bob Carey, and nine members of the community. And the selection process went very well and we selected some very talented folks who had some technical competence in this area. And the task force members met several times and investigated along with DES as helping us. And DES did a terrific job at the state, being available and coming to the town to speak with us and holding sessions, electronic sessions in a Zoom environment, if you will, for people to understand. So what we did is we organized, after several meetings, we organized around three separate goals. And that is to identify what the PFAS standards were and how to test for them, to identify how to mitigate those contaminants, and also to mount communication efforts within the community to spread the word and educate our fellow citizens. So those three goals were established for the nine members. So three members for each goal consumed the nine members. And then Bob Carey and I oversaw that. And also lots of behind-the-scenes work by the Assistant Town Manager Lisa Drabek. She did a terrific job helping support and getting things done that needed to get done, especially with DES. So in the well testing and DES standards goal, we looked at what's the rationale for the PFAS standards that were adopted. We tried to understand the consent decree versus the remainder of the town. So there are two different classes of people in town, depending on where your property lands, whether it's in the consent decree or outside the consent decree. And well-testing procedures specific to each area. We looked at the toxicology of the PFAS chemical. That is an emerging science right now. It's, we don't, even the toxicologist at the state doesn't have all the answers. What we do know and what is troubling is that PFAS is one of those chemicals that accumulates in the human body and is not easily cleansed out. So it's something that, and so we don't know what the long-term effects are of what that accumulation of PFAS chemicals are in the body. And so what we thought we would do is look at PFAS versus other naturally occurring contaminants. And we did find that arsenic is still a problem in the town, but we did not expand the mission of this particular task force to include arsenic. We thought that we would end up in a never-ending search and never finish. So we decided to truncate our investigation to the order that was initiated by the town council to look just at the PFAS issue. Then we looked at remediation. We looked at what the remediation requirements are for the consent decree versus the non-consent decree area. The consent decree area, the remediation is gonna be tasked with St. Cobain. That's their responsibility to fix, if you will, or remediate the problem within the consent decree. Outside the consent decree, the residents of Londonderry are really on their own. They have to test their own water and they have to provide their own remediation efforts, whether it be what we call a point-of-use remediation, which is at the faucet, or if you want to purify the water for the entire home. That's a much more expensive situation, but there are really two different ways to do that. So the, and we also looked at what's the feasibility of long-term strategies for areas outside the consent decree. And we've spoken about maybe a town-wide water system, maybe eventually that would be controlled and it's, in terms of its cleanliness and its drinking water suitability. Very expensive, however. And also then we looked at the public education piece of the goal of the task force. We wanted to make sure that we answered the public's questions accurately in a timely manner. We conducted a live webinar with DES on May twentieth. It was attended by, I think, several hundred people electronically. We conducted a vendor fair in June at the high school cafeteria where we brought in several vendors that will do water testing and also several vendors that will do water mitigation systems, both point-of-views and whole-house systems. At the, in the financial impacts, we have understood that we will be receiving some amount of money, we don't know how much yet, some amount of money to help with this situation in town and that we do feel that we will be able to help those people outside the consent decree area that won't have St. Cobain paying for their mitigation, that we may, as a town, be able to have enough money granted to the town in order to help our residents. We won't know how help, how much help we can be until we find out exactly how much money we're gonna have. So that's still to be determined, but there is a good news story in there eventually. Other recommendations for future actions. We have looked at suggesting that the town council consider a non-binding referendum in next March as warrant to ask the town if they would consider the town council to look at a town-wide water system, whether, and that would be for the town to do it gradually, you know, a little bit at a time. That's an option. That warrant article would not obligate any funds to be expended. It's just an opinion warrant article to say, is the town concerned enough about drinking water in the town to want the town council to look into this as an option? Another approach is see if the town residents want to pursue maybe individual lines of fresh water coming in, maybe one neighborhood at a time or one section of the town at a time. And, or should we, as another option, look at what is the, would we want to do a feasibility study as to how we might mitigate this in the non-consent area of town? And one last thing we recommended is that the town manager consider adding an additional technical staff member to his staff to help manage this and help provide a level of expertise that the town needs to have as we walk into this area that is really quite new to all of us. Again, we don't know a lot about the toxicology, we're learning as fast as we can. And that, how that would be paid for is we recommend that, at least for a couple of years' worth of salary, whatever grant money we're gonna get, that we use some of that money to pay for this. And not, so it would not be an additional headcount add, at least for the first couple of years, that after that point in time, then the town council, along with the town manager, would decide whether or not we wanted to turn this position into a full-time position, a permanent position, once that grant money is no longer available. So with that, that concludes the efforts of the task force with possible exception of maybe the task force members helping at some point with deciding the money that could be distributed, you know, they could overview some of the applications if people want to get reimbursed for a water filter system, they might be a resource. Again, that's gonna be up to the town manager and his staff. But if we need some amount of expertise of volunteerism, they could help with that. But without that, their efforts right now are done. So with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I've invited the task force members to appear at our next town council members to be recognized for the good work that they've done.
Yeah, absolutely. And some of them have contacted me with regards to that they want to have some comment time about the final report, which is certainly acceptable. Questions from the council? Yes.
Thank you. So there's a question in my mind, Tom, that I'm not sure if you guys got to this answer and I didn't understand it. But if St. Cobain is the major contributor to the pollution problems that we're seeing in our town and if the houses are close enough to the contaminated area or the outlined area, why is it that they can't expand that area? And why is it that we, the taxpayers in the town, have to be responsible? Because we didn't pollute the water, so we now have to be responsible and pay for this when it really should be them paying for it?
I believe that is a,
I just, I just don't know why it wasn't brought up. I don't know.
I'm just, I'm gonna try to answer your question. I believe that this report is something we need to take and take that action. I think that needs to be on our list of saying, okay, we have this, we've done our homework and we've gotta get together as a council and say, okay, what are we gonna do? And we've gotta make, we've gotta take that action.
Okay.
I believe that's the right answer.
Right.
I mean, that's my opinion.
I just think that that question really needs to be answered relatively quickly.
Yeah, the consent decree was determined by the courts. So if we want to challenge the area, the geography of the consent decree, we'd have to go back to the courts. And that would be something the council would decide whether or not they want to expand the legal funds to go after that.
So where we're at right now, it's like I spoke to Nathan at Menanut Water today. So when we started the task force, he was at a hundred and fifty delivers. He's now at eight hundred. So, I mean, he's got five trucks. I mean, you know. So I've spoke to, the reason I spoke to him was the resident called me today and said, you know, I've been waiting a month. I can't even get water. I said, well, let me call Nathan and find out what's going on. You know, because I myself drove out there and got my own water. They told me I can pick it up. Because they said it would be a month. So what I, you know, my opinion, what I would like to see is, is I would like to, you know, some of the task force members have asked if they can make some comment on the final report. I think that's very reasonable.
Sure.
I also think we need to take that information and as we're going into budget season, we gotta start asking some hard questions here. And we gotta say, you know, this, so part of what DES said to us was is that we need to have our own town-owned water system. We should have our own water department and we shouldn't go to Penachuk. That's a question we need to answer. Now, because that's gotta be part of the lawsuit.
I understand. And that does bother me.
And I'm agreeing with you.
No, but I'm just saying, it does bother me. I mean, if we put in the infrastructure, right? We lay the pipelines. When Comcast comes in and lays the wires or the cables, whenever Source comes in and puts in the poles and the wires, we, the taxpayers, don't pay for it. You know what I'm saying?
We do at some point, but.
Well, I mean, you opt in to pay for it. It's not the taxpayers paying to put the whole infrastructure into the town.
Right.
Is my point. We're putting in these lines and things at the taxpayer cost and then Penachuk reads the profits from it. Correct? I mean, that's the way I see it. They're getting water for ten cents a gallon from Manchester Water. reselling it to our residents who have already paid to put the infrastructure in at 80 cents and making a profit. They don't offer us a rebate of sewer.
In the consent decree area...
I'm talking about the whole town and laying sewers for this...
Right, but there are different sets of rules depending on the geography. In the consent decree area, if it is decided that the long-term mitigation is to put in a public water system for the consent decree area, then St. Cobain pays for that.
Right, but I'm talking about every other place around, outside of that area that is effective by it. I just don't think that the sewer line should be on the taxpayer. I really don't.
Well, the sewer lines are self-funded.
Not sewer, I'm sorry. I meant to say water lines, pardon me.
No worries.
My mistake.
So, what happened, so here's what the consent decree says. And it was approved by the Attorney General and accepted by the court. 70 parts per trillion.
Right.
We're at 12. So, we have to, someone has to be the plaintiff. So, that's what we've got to figure out.
When that consent decree came out, they were basing it on 70 parts per trillion at the time, which is why when you looked at Londonderry and the areas around, you know, closest to the western side, there weren't many wells that were above, that tested above 70. So, they basically took Londonderry out of it. They've since lowered it to 12 and now the whole town is lit up.
And that's been upheld by the court.
So, can that be another case? And I don't, if this might be...
And that's exactly what we...
Another case. But I mean, how do we move that forward a little bit quicker than waiting through budget seizing and having the answer maybe at the same time or something?
And that's the discussion we have to have.
Okay, well...
So, when these people come in next week, so what I would like to see happen is, I'd like to see, hear from some of these folks who've inquired and said, hey, I want input. Come in and talk about it, but then we need to have that uncomfortable conversation to say, what are we going to do? Are we going, are we going to go down this path or this path?
Yeah.
And we're going to have to make some uncomfortable decisions based on that conversation and whether or not that's the path to go down. At the end of the day, just like when we hire firefighters, just like when we hire police, it's up to the voters.
Oh, I understand totally.
Okay, but we have to start having that conversation. That's what we were waiting for, for this report.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Can I then ask?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Can I then ask Mr. Smith, if by the next meeting, just to have it available for everyone, maybe look at like Hampstead has a water committee and Stratum has a good water committee, other towns, so we have something to talk about and look at moving forward? And the other point of reference is that at the last planning board meeting, we were talking to DES and they've got grant money for people to come in and work for towns to help rewrite ordinances, to help organize, to set up stuff. So, we as a town should look into that for what you were, what they're saying here so that that employee would be funded by the grant money. So, they definitely have it for...
Well, I will tell you, Lisa heard this as well, that DES told us that as they've looked across the state, that Londonderry is the most forward-thinking town with regard to mitigating PFAS contaminants in the...
Maybe in that, but as far as water, we're behind the eight ball. It's not having a plan.
Well, I mean, DES is...
Just because you're the most forward-thinking doesn't mean you've done everything right.
No, I'm not saying that either.
Or it doesn't mean you're there. So, here's the conversation I had with the commissioner. I, you know, I had a very unhappy conversation with the commissioner, which changed the posture of how we were, you know, being, you know, prioritized by the state. So, now what we need to do is we're in the position of being the most, saying we're their priority. Let's not drop the ball.
I agree.
Now, let's take what we've been waiting for and now we need to execute a plan.
We're on the same page with that.
So, I don't know what that plan is yet, but I know we need to move forward on it. So, whatever resources we need to capture the information that we learn from any of the task force members, whatever attorneys we need involved, let's start having that conversation so we can figure out what to do.
Yeah, and I think something else that would be helpful, Tom and Lisa, is I've had some discussions last week with a few top state officials with regard to the tranche of money the state has gotten from the federal government and what they plan on handing out. It is, it is the single largest grant of money the state has ever received and probably will ever receive. The state's getting close to $1 billion and what I've been told is about 650 million of that is going directly to DES for clean water mitigation. In my discussions with Senate President Morse last week, he reiterated again Londonderry is at the top of the list. So, I think what would be very, in terms of receiving funds, I think what would be helpful is to have a document I could provide that says, okay, $100 million gets us this, 50 million gets us this. So that when they're, because we're not going to be the only town that gets money, but when they're figuring out how to appropriate that funds, they can look at us and say, okay, here's where we think, you know, Londonderry should fall in this. And I would hope between, you know, the Speaker of the House being from Londonderry and the advocacy efforts that, you know, we've done as a town and certainly Senator Morse knows our needs being in Salem, that we would be due for quite a large piece of that pie.
Senator Morse is putting together kind of the same or similar thing that we did here in Londonderry with the task force. He's doing it at the state level and he's asked me to be on the committee with him. So, I'll be able to stay close to that.
Okay. So, I mean, we've been running around with a $200 million number. Let's start paring that down and find out what that is. And DES's recommendation is to create our own water department. So, I think that's the path we're going to have to go down. Whether, and not to go down the path of Penachuk. I mean, that's what they told us. And so, we need to explore that, whomever can help us. We good?
Yep.
Okay, next item. So, we don't have public comment, right? This is just discussion with the council. Wait, go ahead. You know, this is out of the ordinary, but please proceed.
Sorry.
That's okay. You're here. You took the time to come down.
Phil Belanger, 18 Trolley Car Lane. You talked about the consent decree, but what about all those other people? Are you looking to see how those other people that are in the non-consent area affected? I mean, is anybody tracking to see what results people are getting?
Yes, and the state is testing on those. And what we're talking about is, is that the dissent decree was only at 70 parts per trillion. The state has now lowered that to 12 parts per trillion.
But from High Range Road over, right?
From the middle of High Range Road over.
So, if you go to the east...
Yep.
Right, so what we're saying up here is that...
Track those people who have the water tested and...
Yes.
Right, we need to have a separate action.
Yes.
You know, against St. Cobain based on the new pieces. And we need to figure out how to do that. What is it going to cost and what's the cost of litigation? And then how much money is it that we're actually looking for to be able to remedy what's going on? That was sort of what we were spinning around up here on. Thanks.
For the rest of the people.
Sorry about that. Is anything new, Ray? Don't tell me I got to fix it. Is it anything new?
Come on, Ray.
I mean, you know, it's not, it's not public comment. If it's something new, I'm more than willing to listen.
Well, you already opened the door.
Ray, is it anything new?
Is there anything new?
Ray, is there anything new you want to discuss with the council?
No, you don't want to talk to me. You said, go ahead.
Ray, it's not public comment. If you want to ask a new question, I'll happily listen to your new question. Just not another reiteration of what you've been trying to tell us that we're trying to do. I'm trying.
Okay, look.
If you want to come up...
I appreciate what you're doing, okay?
Come up to the mic, please. Ray, President 3, Cary Drive. I appreciate everything that's been said here this evening. Everything is headed in the right direction. That's the good thing, okay? Okay. What I think we need to also think about is where are we going to get the information? A lot of the information is available free of charge. The DES is our primary people, okay? What they want to see from us is where is your plan? That's what you've been talking about. You need to continue on that, come up with a plan. But when we're talking about spending the money, as Kevin Smith said, there is a lot of money available, okay? If we're talking about hiring lawyers to sue St. Cobain's or Penachuk, we don't need to go that route. It's a waste of money. We need to take advantage of the money that is available. Please. I've said enough. You're doing a great job. Continue.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item.
Can I just ask one quick question?
I won't do this again, you know? Sure, sure, why not?
You're the best. Marge Bedoy, 189 Litchfield Road. What's the status of the $500,000 grant for testing and remediation? Have we set up that program yet?
If you permit me, I can answer that for you, yes. So, we have completed all the necessary paperwork with the state and now we're just waiting to get the final grant agreement from the state, which then will have to go up to be signed by the governor and the executive council. So, we don't actually have any monies yet allocated. It's got to wind its way through the process. As soon as we're ready to go, we'll have the application. We'll put it on the website, make it publicly available for everybody to be able to take advantage of that. Unfortunately, it's out of my hands at this point. It's winding its way through the process. So, I'm hopeful sometime in the next month or two, but I, it's out of our control.
Nice, they could go in the tax bill.
Yeah, I don't, I can't make any promises. I'm sorry.
Okay, next item. Discussion regarding the reinstatement of the former budget committee member. So, Christine Patton, whose husband took ill and passed away recently, stepped down from the budget committee to tend for her and care for her husband. I think things moved along a lot faster than she expected. And I spoke with her in August, I spoke with her again at Old Home Day, and she would like to consider reinstatement. It would just be an appointment to the end of her term, which is, I believe, ends in March. So, if, what she's asking is for, I guess it would be a reappointment to the budget committee. So, free your consideration.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Christine, please see the clerk and be sworn back in. Okay, approval of August 16th, 2021, Town Council minutes as presented. Questions?
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Minutes are approved. Liaison reports. Well, I guess as the old Home Day liaison, what I will say is, is that it was well-received by the community. The feedback overall from this and Concerts on the Common is, is that we, especially since people are spending more time at home and more time in town, is that we should do more in the community and we should find a way to get more involved and have more events and more things locally for people to enjoy. So, that's the overall feedback I got and it was certainly exciting to walk down Mammoth Road and see a lot more people than I expected. Anyone else liaisons?
I had a planning board. We did have the Department of Environmental Services, Pierce was his name, speak to us in regards to our groundwater maintenance and different ordinances that affect water. And he went through a great presentation, presentational slideshow. And it looks like we're going to be moving forward to looking at rewriting some of those ordinances and getting a little bit more proactive when it comes to protecting our groundwater in the town of Londonderry moving forward.
So, that was probably... Loop all this together.
I'm sorry?
We should probably loop all this together.
I agree.
Yes?
Kind of is a liaison issue. When I was talking to the Speaker of the House recently, he asked if we could, not we as Londonderry, but we as legislators could look at RSAs or state laws that are old and need to be gotten rid of or I guess the proper term is to be sunsetted because they're just not applicable anymore. So, I guess, Kevin, if you could, if you have things that the town is struggling to comply with that you would just as soon see relieved, let me know and see what we can do.
No more horse parking at the lion's hole? Okay.
Sure, we can come up with a few.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you know, obviously I'm the school board liaison. The police department's been great in supporting them through these difficult times for them. They, they've, we've tried to give them as much help and as many town services as we can to help them through this time and will continue to do so. Okay, town managers report.
Thank you. I have a few items before I get to the one that's on the agenda. First is the town clerk wanted me to remind people that this is the last week for dog registrations. Civil forfeiture letters will be going out next week. There's a $25 fine plus all late fees. That's a state law. So, if, and if your dog has passed or moved, you know, please notify us of that. So, just make sure if you haven't registered your dog yet, you do so by the end of this week. Secondly, I had, at the invitation of Councilor Pappas, attended a meeting with Amtrak last week with some of the other surrounding communities. As Director Kitchens had alluded to, they are, they are also getting a significant tranche of money from the federal government as part of that bill that was passed, the ARPA bill. And so, they're going to be expanding their lines. And one of their priorities is the Capitol Corridor from Concord into Lowell. And there would be a stop at Manchester Airport. And so, we got the preliminary layout of that. But they are looking to invest a significant amount of money in expanding, as I said, a rider ship track along that corridor. And that is largely being managed by New Hampshire DOT. The last thing I wanted to bring up tonight is DOT's been on us about we need to come up with a name for this new connector road that will be the road right when you get off of Exit 4A, which will go from Londonderry, pretty much begins in Woodmont Commons East Side land and goes through into Derry to Sineado Road. And so, in speaking with the town administrator over there, Dave, we had talked about to seeing if the towns could come up with a name that perhaps paid homage to the history of both communities since the road was bisecting both communities. And so, he took it to their heritage commission first. They had come up with two names, one being McGregor Parkway, the other one being Ulster Scott Parkway. The town council endorsed both of those names. The reason they came up with the two of them is because there was, somebody from over in Derry rightly pointed out that Londonderry has a McGregor Drive now with the McGregor apartments off of Stonehenge. And so, when I brought the names to the 911 committee, they did say that the McGregor Parkway would not be acceptable to them because we already have a McGregor Drive. And so, what I'm just looking for tonight from the council is a consensus that you're okay with sending to Heritage the idea of the name Ulster Scott, Ulster Scott Parkway, paying homage to the Ulster Scots who came over from Scotland or Northern Ireland to found Nutfield. Nutfield Parkway would have been great too, but we already have a Nutfield, as does Derry.
Is the connector road in Londonderry?
It's, it's both in Londonderry and Derry.
It starts in Londonderry, yeah.
Right.
The majority is in Derry, yeah.
Send it to, yeah, send it to Heritage.
All right.
Unless you want to call it something else. If someone has another idea.
Yeah, I mean, if you do, I mean, you don't have to tell me tonight, but let me know after that. me know after that. But, those are the names Derry had, and so...
I would suggest you send it to the Heritage Commission.
How about the Pinkerton Parkway? They're buried in Londonderry.
Yeah, they are.
I, I'm just throwing names out there.
Yeah, and I don't know how 911 would react to the Derry side. I mean, I don't, I don't know if we have a Pinkerton Road, but I'm sure Derry probably has.
Don't, don't know.
Yeah, so...
Yep, send it in. If, if someone in the community has another idea and would like to see the road named something else...
Do we need to ask the fire department to help the Heritage Commission make sure that we don't have any conflicts with names?
Well, that's where, that's, they're part of the, they're part of the 911 committee. So, when I had sent both names to them, they nixed McGregor Parkway, but they were fine with Ulster Scott's Parkway.
Yeah, and if there's someone else that we should be thinking about.
Yeah. We just, we have to, this, we have to move quickly on this, and obviously, both towns have to buy into it, so...
When do you, excuse me, when do you think we're going to put shovel in the dirt for the 4A?
Well, their current schedule has construction being advertised in March with a shovel in the ground, either late spring or early summer next year.
Lisa?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
All set. Anything else? Our next council meeting is September 27th at 7:00 PM. There'll be a new schedule coming out. I believe we have one on October 4th, and then, and budget, Saturday budget meeting is right around the corner. It's November 6th. So, mark your calendars for November 6th. Anything else for this evening?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.